This is the JCCC Student Senate Town Hall about parking issues. Just to let everyone know, it is being video recorded, so you will appear on video, or you could. It's being recorded for educational purposes and may also appear on the college's YouTube page. So I just wanted to address Berna, she's the president of Student Senate, who will be leading the town hall today.
Thank you for coming. We had many students asking questions about parking and complaining that there is no parking. So we decided to invite some guests to talk about parking. We have Ed Vezey, a Parking Control Officer. We have Rex Aiz, Executive Director of Campus Services. And Ryan Wing, that is the Senior Sustainability Data and Research Analyst. Ryan, I know you did a study about parking. Would you like to start with it?
Sure. Can you maybe advance slides for me? Can you advance, or do you have a clicker? Okay, go ahead. Okay, so to kind of introduce this, this was a study that we've done a couple of times. Once at the start of the semester, and that was done in last fall. And then once in the middle of the semester, and that was done the spring before last fall. So these are the, the way the study was done was we electronically counted all traffic that entered the campus over a two-day period each day, each time the study was done, a Tuesday and a Wednesday. And we also observed parking lots and estimated how full they were throughout the course of the day from about 8:00 to 6:30 each day, each time the study was done. So this is kind of what came out of that, so. So in the spring, in the middle of the semester, we had about 13,000 cars a day that enter campus. And in the fall, in the fall, we always have more students than in the spring. We had an average of about 14,000 cars a day that enter campus. For reference, we have 5,200 parking spaces on campus, so. And what we found too was, the last time that study had been updated previously before we did it this time, was 2001. And the increase in student population and the increase in number of cars coming to campus was almost one-to-one. So when we add a student, we add a car coming to campus. And we think that's sort of by definition, an unsustainable path to be on. And institutional research here on campus came up with these figures that if you add up student, staff, and faculty commuting miles every day, we travel seven times around to the equator of Earth getting to and from school. And that's one round trip between home and campus, so. Posted at entrances throughout the study were people counting vehicles that entered campus that they could visually see had more than one occupant in the vehicle. And this was done during morning peak times and evening peak times to get a sample of what we might expect throughout the day. And they found that 10% of cars entering campus had more than one person in it. So that leaves a lot of opportunity for carpooling and that kind of thing. Okay, on the parking side of the study, this is what we found throughout, so this is parking capacity usage throughout the day. This is the spring, and this is mid-semester. The peak that we found was noon, and that was 84% full. Go ahead and advance to the next one. Next slide. And this is the fall, so this is the start of the semester. And the peak that we found then was 97% full, and that was at 10:00 AM in the morning. And to give you a quick idea, not every region of parking on campus is equal. So this is the mid, middle of the semester in the spring. The green line is the north, so all parking lots on the north side of campus. The gray is the southeast, so all the library lots and the clock lots. And the orange is the southwest. So this is capacity usage throughout the day. So north is full all day, but southwest, you know, has spots available open all day. And this is the same picture for the fall at the start of the semester. So there, what we found was there are still spots available in the southwest. Obviously, that's changed a little bit with culinary, the culinary building being built now. But this is sort of the traffic pattern that we found during this study. So our conclusions, because of that one-to-one ratio of adding a student and adding a car, we have to figure out a way to either get more people and vehicles coming to campus, or we have to limit the number of vehicles coming to campus. And really attack this as a problem of, students want to get to campus, so how do we get students to campus without them coming in a vehicle by themselves? So we made some projections after we did these studies. We projected that we would be full this fall based on the culinary building being built, and that happened. And we're projecting that in spring 2015, we will be full during the mid-semester time that we did that study. So we made some recommendations based on what we found. And our first recommendation was to, what not to do, and that is to build more parking. Sort of counter-intuitively, you know, when you build parking, more people will use that parking and people will continue to drive to campus. And the reason that we are recommending not building more parking is to build a new surface lot, which is just one level lot, and this would be the average size of a lot on campus, 440 spaces, would cost $1.76 million. If we had a 2% enrollment increase, which is about average for the last 10 years, that lot would be used up in 10 years, or, sorry, two years. And we would then have to build a new surface lot to account for growing student population. Correspondingly, if we built a garage that would be exactly the same size as Galileo's garage that we currently have, the bill for that would be conservatively $17.25 million. We would use up that capacity in five years with the 2% enrollment increase, and then we would have to build another garage. For reference, Galileo's Garden was built about eight or nine years ago, I think. We're still paying it off, and you can see the numbers down on the bottom. We had a net increase of parking spaces of 1,280 over 2001 to 2011. And we added 2,776 vehicles over that time. So we, the projection to use it up in five years is exactly what happened with Galileo's Garden, basically, so. So what we're proposing, instead of building new parking garages, because we are really kind of out of land space to build single-level lots, we would be looking at building garages, is express bus routes. So if you're familiar with the K-10 route that goes directly to and from Lawrence and our campus, this would be the same type of routes, but inside of Johnson County. So they, they would take students directly to and from park-and-ride lots, which have already been established inside the county. The Joe uses them, some of them now. The, we worked with the Joe to kind of mock up what a system like this might look like, to get estimations of time and cost, et cetera. So the system that we've mocked up would have buses arriving and leaving campus every 30 minutes. So timed, you know, before and after classes, we could easily get students on and off campus when they need to with that type of system. The idea would be, students would ride for free using their ID. And also using their ID, you could ride any Joe bus route with the exception of the K-10 for free. And we think this is really kind of a way to create an actual solution to the problem rather than applying a Band-Aid in building a new garage and then having to build a new garage. And, and the reality is, students help pay off garages. With Galileo's Garden still not being paid off, you know, this, this garage would add to that, too. And the, the bus routes that we've created, if you just want to go ahead and go to the next slide, back one. So the Joe came up with an estimate of a total cost to run. The two routes would basically make an X over the county with the college at the middle of that X. And so to run the two routes for a full annual year would be $1.5 million, which compared to, if you remember the number on the garage slide, that was $3.45 million per year. So this saves about $2 million annually versus building garages. Okay, go ahead. So $1.5 million annually. We've also proposed, go ahead to the next slide, that one way that we might look at paying for that $1.5 million is we could institute parking permits. So that people that choose to drive are helping to pay for the system of people taking buses. So if you take the bus, you don't have to buy a parking permit, it's completely free to you. We've made some different levels of parking permits per semester fees and what that would provide for the college. All of these numbers take into account a student being paid about $10 an hour to enforce the parking permits, so a team of students patrolling the lots. So then you can see here, if we did a $50 per semester fee, taking out the enforcement costs, the college would make about $1.4 million off of those, so that would, that would pay for the routes, so. And beyond the bus solution, we think we really kind of need to take an all-of-the-above approach to the problem. Carpooling being one, we have so many cars coming to campus with only one occupant in them. We have a system called RideShare that's provided free of charge to the college by Mid-America Regional Council. It's an online system, ridesharekc.com. Get on, log in, set up an account, and it will show you on a map who lives around you. You tell it that you're coming to Johnson County Community College, and it will show you people around you that are also commuting to and from Johnson County Community College. And you can match up with them anonymously and try to arrange a carpool using that free system. Trying to encourage bicycling where we can on campus. We've put up some additional bike racks, looking at how we can support safe bicycling infrastructure on campus and get students on and off campus safely on a, on a bike. And also even non-transportation solutions like scheduling. Can we spread classes out further so that we're not, the bulk of the cars on campus are on campus from 10:00 to 2:00? So if we can kind of spread that out a little bit throughout the day, that might help alleviate some of the problem more in the short term. Hybrid classes where maybe you are online two days a week and come to campus one day a week might help attack the problem, too. And, and obviously update the study so we kind of keep track of where we're at. So I know that's a lot of information, but are there any questions or comments?
One quick, maybe not one that spends more time with Ryan, is that no matter what the solution is in terms of whether it be more parking lots, or a parking garage, or parking permits, or whatever, ultimately, the people who pay for that are the students and the users on the campus.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the question is not, will people pay more? The question is, what will that amount be and what are you buying?
Right, yeah. It's gonna, it will take money to solve this problem, no matter how we solve it. So the, the point that we've made is, we can solve it using parking garages, which we also argue doesn't actually solve the problem, it just sort of extends it. Or we can solve it using the bus lines, and that option costs a lot less. So, yeah, ultimately, you know, it will cost money, but we're trying to make it cost less money, actually solve the problem, and then less would have to be paid for by students, so.
Any other question?
I've always been wondering about this carpool system, and I had no idea that we actually had one. So I was wondering, could we maybe have maybe the school update it for us so people, so students don't have to go look for it and then like enter their information in there, but that the school does it for us? So if someone is looking for a ride or for someone to take with them, that it's already all in there? Because now it's probably limited, because there's only a few people that know about it and actually entered their information right.
Yeah, and this, I think what the point you're getting at, the more people that sign up for it, the better the system will work. Whether or not we can automatically have student data be entered into that system, I don't know. You know, I don't know technically, and I don't know legally if that's something that we can do, but I like the suggestion. And, yeah, and I agree, it needs to be promoted more, you know, to make students aware that this option is available. Because I think one thing, too, that gets missed sometimes in the parking-transportation conversation is, just this semester I was contacted because a student that was taking classes at Aletha Health Education Center got in a car accident, did not have enough money to fix her car, was in the middle of the semester, had no way to get to Aletha Health Education Center, and needed some way to finish her classes. And she just literally could not physically get to Aletha Health Education Center. So I think we sometimes forget how reliant we are on the one way that we have to get around here. So if we had something like a bus system, that expands opportunities for students that might not otherwise be able to get here using a vehicle, so.
I'm sure other colleges and universities have dealt with similar issues or are. I know UMKC parking is not very fun. But could you share with us a little bit about any other institutions that you looked at when you were looking in parking here?
Yeah, sure. Regionally, you know, kind of, our bus idea is basically to propose running a bus system by the school, but the school's not actually running that bus system. So the, the idea was kind of developed from University of Kansas's system, where they run their own buses. But they integrated those buses with the city bus system so that students can use the KU ID to ride not only buses that the University of Kansas runs, but also any public transit bus. UMKC just did a cool program where they're served by the ATA, which we are not served by. But they instituted a $17 per semester, per student fee. And that allows any UMKC student to use their student ID to ride any ATA bus to commute to and from campus. We would love to be able to do something like that. Unfortunately, the Joe's schedules and routes just really aren't set up to be able to adequately serve students' needs. They're set up as a peak commuter system, so morning and evening. And students obviously need to get on and off campus throughout the day. So if we were able to do something like that, you know, we would be all about it. But unfortunately, it's not available, so. And yeah, and there, you know, beyond regionally, there are a number of colleges that have gone to systems like this to encourage more public transportation use. Usually, they don't have to try to create the routes themselves. They're usually served by public transportation first. Arizona State University has a cool program where they have passes that allow students to ride buses and light rail and a bunch of forms that come to their campus. Arizona State University, yeah.
No? Then Ed or Rex, do you want to say anything about it?
I had a question about the culinary building that's being constructed now. And that construction site, everything within that fence, there's 200 and around 60 parking spots that are not available now because of the construction. And to help alleviate the relief for taking of those parking spots, we built a temporary parking lot that's on the north Quavira entrance, off of Quavira. There's a temporary par, parking lot there, it holds 100, approximately 100 parking spaces. So after the culinary project is complete, we will lose approximately 130 spaces due to that new building site. So those are some questions that I get occasionally, and just wanted to pass along that information. Right now, there's no plans to replace those 130 spaces, but that doesn't mean that we won't consider it in the future. But again, as of right now, there's no plans for additional parking garages or parking lots on the campus to be built.
Okay, my name is Ed Vezey, and I'm on the police department here at the college. And if you look on the, the list of employees under the police department, it shows Parking Control Officer. And that is a little bit inaccurate, because a lot of people think that I'm the one responsible for parking on campus. And actually, I'm not. We do take care of parking reservations, we do enforce the parking regulations, and also take care of reserved parking. But as part of that job, just like Rex has said, we, we get a lot of complaints. And a lot of the complaints are about tickets. The other part of the complaints are, why is there no parking around campus? So in our job duties, if you were to look on the north side of campus every day on the hour, you will see cars circling and circling and circling. If you were to go down in the Lower East Garage about that same time, and you were to see a student or an individual leave the building, you'll see a car almost stalking him, trying to get that, that parking spot. So as, as an experiment, I've gone down three times now, and let me tell you what I find. If you were to enter campus at the South Quavira Road exit, get on Campus Drive and drive to the Galileo parking lot, not the garage, but the Galileo parking lot, at 20 miles an hour, you will arrive there in 1 minute and 20 seconds. If you were to enter campus at the West College Boulevard exit, get on Campus Drive and go to the Galileo parking lot, you will arrive there in 2 minutes and 30 seconds. And if you were to enter campus at the East College Boulevard entrance, go to the Galileo parking lot, you will get there 1 minute 35 seconds. If you park in the far-south row of the Galileo lot and walk to the entrance to the Student Center in the middle of campus through the parking lots, that took me 3 minutes and 40 seconds this morning. But every day, we see these cars circling around and circling around. On occasion, I have stopped a few of them and offered to help or provide directions. Unless they know I'm just waiting for a parking spot. I think a lot of the complaints about parking can be reduced if, if people can accept the idea that you can park on the south side of campus in the Galileo parking lot, or the train lot, and get to the center part of campus within five or 10 minutes. This morning, when I parked in the Galileo parking lot, there were 65 open spaces and more in the train lot. So if, you know, people would accept that idea, I think we could reduce a lot of stress. Because this continual circling and stalking in a parking lot and the garages, particularly in the early part of semester, has resulted in fights, accidents, especially hit-and-runs where people will bump a car, you know, trying to get in and out of a space and then just leave because they're in a hurry. If you were to stand or direct traffic, you notice that a lot of people, a lot of students arriving on campus seem to be rushed or stressed, and that just adds to the, what we call the parking lot rage level, where people are competing for the same space. And eventually, it may lead to, each semester, the parking lot rage, as we refer to it, seems to increase from verbal arguments to actual physical fights this semester. So if we could get the word out to people to just go to the south side of campus, I think we can reduce some of our problems. Are there any questions I can answer as far as the parking regulations or tickets or parking, parking ticket appeals? Okay? Okay? Open within 30 minutes, right? Right. Right. Well, I, I think it comes down to a couple of things. The police department here, just like every other department on campus, has, has lost personnel due to funding. And we don't always have the luxury of scheduling our day so that we can designate someone to do nothing but parking enforcement all day long. So part of the problem is enforcement, is it enforced often enough? And the other part is, is people don't care. Give you an example, there was an individual last semester who received 17 parking tickets. And he wasn't worried about it, he said, well, that's just part of, just like paying tuition, I'll pay these at the end of semester, and that's just the way it is. So write as many tickets as you want. Legally, you know, we can write the, the individual parking tickets, but we can't tow their cars or anything. So in other words, if they were to park in 30 minutes, or especially the visitor parking lot here west of the Carlson Center, which they will do all day long, and, you know, they could receive a ticket every hour. But that's as far as we can take it. Because once you would get into impounding cars, then you get into a whole new area of legal regulations and liability.
Are the, are the tickets tied to the, to the state system at all? Because I know at UMKC, the one, only other one I'm familiar with, if you don't pay your ticket, you're going to get something in the mail from...
From the municipal court. The only parking violations that we enforce and file through city court are handicap violations. And so in other words, if an individual parks in a handicap designated spot without their placard displayed or the handicap license tag on her vehicle, they're issued a city ticket. All other parking violations are college violations. And those are internal administrative violations. If an individual does not pay, and this would apply to both students and staff and faculty, pay their ticket or appeal it within 10 days, then a hold is placed on all their accounts. And if it's a faculty member, their student dean is informed. So there is, there is a penalty. Once you've received your first ticket, any consecutive tickets or can, following tickets define increases to $20, but it never goes over $20. As far as the state, no, the State Motor Vehicle Department is not notified of any of the parking violations, unless it's a handicap violation which is filed through Oldham Park Municipal Court. And that is a whole other process. If an, excuse me, an individual receives one of those, does not appear in court, If an, excuse me, an individual receives one of those, does not appear in court, the court will issue a warning letter. If the individual does not contact the court within another thirty days, the court will suspend her driver's license. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
I actually have a question for Ryan. When you were talking about the Ride Share program through the Joe or however that would happen, how close are we to that? Is it still, I mean, is there dialogue between the college and the bus system or?
So you're asking about the, the hypothetical routes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or how long it would take to get down with the.
It, it's really hard to say. There are a lot of moving parts there. The Joe's funding from the state and the county was just cut this most recent budget cycle. That makes it a little more difficult. But one, I guess if you want to call it a positive for us, is because of those route cuts, they now have buses that are available during the day, you know, that we could potentially use on the routes that we've proposed. So I guess what I'm saying is procuring the buses, you know, wouldn't be a holdup, which was identified early on that that may have been a potential hurdle. So that would be fine. I guess from, from everything that I've seen, I don't see a reason why we couldn't have those routes up and running by next fall. But that would require college commitment and county commitment and, and a lot of things working together and, and going smoothly. But I would say that's probably the earliest that it could probably be up and running.
Right. Does anybody have any other question? All right. Then do you want to add anything at all? No? Then thank you, everybody, for coming.
Seriously, this helped a lot. I know we had questions about parking in Student Senate early in the semester, as I'm sure most of us will face in the beginning of every semester or the fall semester. But we're going to take this back to Student Senate and let them know. A lot of our senators couldn't attend because they have classes at this time. But thank you so much for being here and it was really helpful. Thank you.
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 Thank you.